Good morning. Call to order, the Tuesday, March 19, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the Clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, March 22, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time. And for your consent matters, items 1 through 27. For item 13, you're adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 6.88 and repealing Chapter 6.87 Title VI of the Sacramento County Code relating to cannabis. You waived reading on this on March 12. You're also adopting an ordinance, item 14, amending the Sacramento County Code to add Section 2.09.800 relating to the South Sacramento Conservation Agency, and you also waived reading on this on March 12. And that concludes my notes.
Okay. Are there any members of the board that would like to comment? Mr. Natoli?
I think Ms. Peters got her hand up first. Mrs. Peters got her hand up first. I do want to comment, so.
Thank you, for your courtesy. Let the record reflect, I'm recusing myself from item 14 to a potential conflict of interest. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. There are a couple of different items. Firstly, just like to call out number four, if I could, please.
Item number four, approval of funding agreement in the amount of $100,000 with the reimagined Mack Road Foundation.
Yes, I'm supportive of this item, but I wanted to call attention to it because I think it's very important, and I guess for Mr. Gill, I wanted to note that I believe when we have these items, we have a couple of these in the county, and I think it's very, very important that annually, when we have our budget, that the money does not go immediately into the general fund, that the opportunity for board members and/or the board to weigh in on these revenues, they are totally discretionary, but these electronic billboards, they go to purposes and, you know, directed in areas that are impacted by the installation of the billboards themselves. I guess I was just a little taken aback in the conversation here in the staff report itself, that somehow the $315,000 found its way into the general fund and hasn't been designated, because the conversation at the time on the land use matter, and certainly many on this board will recall that, was that it was a split vote on the item itself, but that there were impacts in the immediate area in this particular case, in South Sacramento, and that those monies ought to be devoted and put reinvested in the community. This item does $100,000 of that, but I guess I would like to, from the standpoint of annual budgeting, before it just gets built into somebody's budget and then gets spent without us having a conversation about it. And I think there are a couple of other items that would also have an important reference point. There's another billboard, and Supervisor Peters worked very hard in her community to make sure that it goes in the roads or other investments in that community, and so I would like to make sure this gets called out annually before it gets built into the budget.
I think Supervisor Natoli, as you recall, when this was voted on, it was not segregated just for that. It was a countywide revenue that comes in. There's no other place for it to go but to the general fund. That's the name implies. That's where the money comes into it. What we have been doing is with these funds that come in with the supervisor in that district, we do ask the question, do you want to do something with it? That's why this item's right here. We've worked with Supervisor Peters. But there's not a special fund that we've designated said it's not part of the general fund.
I understand that, but if it doesn't get called out, and if the supervisor, you know, there's a lot on the supervisor's plates for all of us, and if it, you know, gets into the budget and then there's not an allocated portion of that, then it just gets built into the bigger whole. And I guess, I understand it's not segregated, but I will just, I feel very strongly, certainly in this case, that this money gets reinvested in South Sacramento. When I look at some of the quarters there and some of the work, certainly Supervisor Kennedy, working with counterparts, not just in the partnerships, Mack Road, but also in, you know, the city, but certainly in the incorporated area, there are tremendous, you know, opportunities to invest that money. And I just think, when I see the sales tax that's generated, I guess I'll just take one more moment here, when I look at what's generated in that area of Calvine Road and Highway 99, between Costco and CarMax and Sam's Club and Lowe's, and then I look at the needs in some of those areas and those communities, largely represented by Supervisor Kennedy, but I abut some of those areas, I think that that sales tax, but also certainly when you get a billboard like this, that that money needs to go back into that community. When I look at the Stockton Boulevard corridor, the Florin Road corridor, or even the Calvine corridor, or Mack Road, obviously. And so I guess what I'd like to make sure is that this money is called out before it gets just built into the budget, recognizing to what you said, Mr. Gill, I have no dispute with that, that it's not segregated in the sense that it isn't some special fund, but that, you know, now we're almost four years into this, five years into this, and this is the first item we've had actually come before our board for allocation of money, and there's still $215,000 on the table. That's been spent, I trust. If it's not been held, then it's been spent, right?
It's not, how can I, let me try another way. Just because it's part of the general fund doesn't mean it's spent. We have reserves, we have different things that we have in there. If a supervisor would like to have access to it, we will have that discussion with the supervisor prior to us bringing the budget to you. So, when you ask me to call it out in the budget, am I being asked to, anything that comes from a billboard, we don't budget it, we just set it aside. I'm just trying to get a clear understanding.
If I can make a recommendation, I'd like to ask staff to go back and watch the video of the meeting in which this was discussed.
Yes.
And actually, I think you'll be clearer that Supervisor Natoli was pretty clear back then, and I think it will, you know, show what the direction of the board was. How that happens, of course, it goes into the general fund, it's not in a separate, you know, yeah, exactly, over, in somewhere else, it goes into the general fund, sure. But if you go back and look at the hearing and determine what the intent of the board was, I think that would be very helpful.
I think it would be. That's a good point of contrast, because if you read this financial analysis, it's the standard call out, that, you know, the expenditures of this agreement will reduce the amount of the general fund, and there won't be, you know, that money won't be available in the balance, and that it'll reduce the net county costs, and that we had, doesn't have that appropriation adjustment, but it wasn't built into the budget. And so it's like, you gotta make, you make all these call outs about exceptions that are, you know, maybe standard, but here we are, and again, that was a hotly debated item, and there were two members on this board that voted against that.
Supervisor Natoli, I'm not disputing that. I think what I'm trying to get at is, this is how, if we don't budget for it, this is where the money ends up going, it's set aside. For us to access the money, we have to go through this step. The other way, I will look at the tape, I'll have Britt look at it too, but what I want to make sure is that we're not leaving you with the wrong impression that you gotta go through all these call outs, because that's how we end up budgeting for it.
Okay.
If there's something for next fiscal year.
If I may, so we don't have to, you know, belabor this, because I appreciate Supervisor Natoli's comments, and to be honest with you, as the supervisor who represents that area now, I would not have known that this was even something that was discussed, because it was prior to my being on this board, if it wasn't for the historic memory that we have in Supervisor Natoli. So my point being, is that if we actually call this out as a separate item, not just in this circumstance, but others, if there's one or two in Ms. Peters' area, then it will be there in perpetuity, which I think was the intention of the board, and it doesn't rely on someone who served 26 years in this position to remember that that conversation took place.
Understood.
Fair enough, sir?
That's fair, and I think it's fair.
Okay.
Yeah. That's fair enough. Okay, then if I could move on, just quickly to a couple other quick items here. Item nine, please.
Item number nine, authorize the registrar of voters to execute retroactive contracts with the Secretary of State for the Help America Vote Act, polling place accessibility training program in the amount of $55,000, for HAVA cybersecurity in the amount of $55,000, and for voting system replacement in an amount up to $4,714,500,000.
Okay, again, supportive of the item, and I just wanted to, I had a chance in my briefing yesterday with Mr. Gill, on this, is that part of this is for training for accessibility, and I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose sight of the point that in the last election cycle, in the June, in general elections in 2018, that we did not have a polling place south of Walnut Grove, and all the other incorporated cities, with the exception of City of Iltin, had a designated polling place, either a four or 11-day vote center. And part of it was the accessibility for the site that was most logical, for the location that actually had transportation, public transportation to it in the City of Iltin. And so, beyond spending money for training, I want to get some assurance, I know certainly Mr. Villanueva has been working with our registrar voters, Courtney Bailey-Canelos, to achieve that, but that, for the 2020 election cycle, that I want to make no mistake that we're going to have a polling center, a vote center in the City of Iltin. If we need to help them, assist them in making the facility accessible, then that's what it takes, and we'd gone through that exercise, weren't able to achieve it last time. So I don't know, David, if you have any updates on that, but I, to me, it's very, very important that each of the incorporated cities at least have one place, a vote center, that folks can physically go to and that are accessible, so.
Correct, Supervisor Natoli. Courtney Bailey is our registrar voter, is, has some meetings set up with the city manager down there to talk about that. This particular grant doesn't allow us to use it for any kind of improvements for accessibility, but we are doing some assessments and looking at moving down there. I know that is a goal of Courtney's, is to have a vote center in that area, but we're still working through the details with the city manager.
Okay. And I know it may have required some capital investment, that, you know, that we're going to be left in a public facility, would have helped with accessibility to the building beyond, obviously, for the intended purpose of voting, but I just think it's really important, and so I trust you'll keep me apprised of that. It's important to have training, but it's also important to have the physical facilities for folks to actually utilize for the purposes of voting, so, okay. And then, if I could, just one last comment, Ms. Chair, on item 19.
Item 19 is the Rosemont Area Streetlight Project bids to be received on April 18.
Okay, I just want to certainly thank our staff for their work on this, and I know that we're going to be able to bring streetlight into this neighborhood, hopefully the bids will reflect that, and I just wanted to point out that we've also been working very closely with transportation, that if we don't do the directional board, and actually have the trench, that we'll have a repaving program that will come in behind that to fix the pavement that hasn't been repavened for many, many decades, like other neighborhoods in the community. But I want to thank our staff for this work. This is our second time around, and appreciate the effort, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any others on the board? I have nothing from the public. Is there a motion?
I'd move the consent calendar.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 28 is the presentation of resolution congratulating the Elk Grove Club on its 82nd anniversary.
I'll invite members of the Elk Grove Book Club to join me at the podium, if they would like to. They've all made their trip here from Elk Grove this morning. And I'll let the club president and members introduce themselves in just a moment, but you might wonder why we celebrate the 82nd anniversary, but I think it's important, whether it's a milestone like an 80th or a 100th, to recognize the good work, and had an opportunity to, certainly I know many of the folks that are joining me here this morning, joining all of us, but over the years, there's been a tremendous amount of leadership in the Elk Grove community in many different realms, and certainly when it comes to literacy and promoting utilization of our libraries, and working with, you know, certainly young people, people of all ages, to continue an interest in literature, and to not only seek out information, but certainly to enjoy, you know, partaking in reading and sharing, and what it brings from a standpoint of intellectual development, but certainly in socialization. And I think the thing that's important to note here, though, is that the roots of this organization go back to just following the Great Depression in our nation, and a time when obviously libraries, but certainly individuals and families, didn't have a lot of resources available to them, so, again, folks that were predecessors to the ladies that are here this morning, and others members of the club, took it upon themselves to form the Elk Grove Book Club. And so I'm going to take just a moment and call out from the resolution here this morning that this board approved just a moment ago, and we're going to present to the members here this morning, that it was established on St. Patrick's Day in 1937. So March 17, 1937, was when the organization had their first meeting. As I noted, it was just falling on the heels of the Great Depression. That backdrop, though, served as an inspiration for a group of then-10 women from the Elk Grove community, which was very rural, as we can all imagine, many of whom were educators and teachers, and I'll share some of those names in a moment, but they came together to form the book club. And again, to, I think, certainly from standpoint of sharing in the cost of the books, but also then to share that, and to obviously share it with other community members, and hopefully inspire interest in reading and learning. Throughout the years, the Elk Grove Book Club has promoted the appreciation of literature in the community, while affording its members the opportunity to share in the review and enjoyment of books of all types. Interestingly enough, though, the membership for the Elk Grove Book Club, and I believe it's the same, was limited to 20. And you might say, well, that's a kind of a small number, but it's because most of the meetings, if not all the meetings, have been held at the homes of members throughout the years, and if you're the host book club member, getting more than 20 in your house can maybe be a little bit of imposition, you know, it's a lot of refreshments. So, with that, though, all the members certainly have participated throughout the generations, and have been required, obviously, to conduct book reviews, but also to regularly attend their meetings. And without fail, every meeting of the Elk Grove Book Club has been chronicled and recorded since 1937, and actually, the information, historical information now resides in the downtown central library in Sacramento Room, where folks, if they were interested, I guess, could go read the book reviews, or at least summaries of those, but also see who was in attendance and participated at any given point in the history of this club. Many distinguished individuals, as I noted a moment ago, and obviously distinguished individuals standing here with me, but the original charter members, none of whom, obviously, are still alive, but names that all of us would recognize, and some of those were Noreen Wakeman, Marion Mix, Ada Beatty, Beth Fokes, Florence Mochoffer, Edna Sperry, Frances Wakeman, Helen Winner, Frances Earhart, and Peggy Lawrence. And some of those names you'll now certainly recall, and it will draw attention to schools and parks and other public facilities that are named in the honor of them and their families, and actually, no less than 10 schools and 14 parks have been named in honor of folks who were part of the Elk Grove Book Club. And so I think that thread of continuity, of certainly serving community, obviously the friendship and the camaraderie that comes with a club that comes together on a regular basis and shares, obviously, in the literature, but also serves a community in so many ways, as mothers and wives and leaders, civic leaders, elected leaders, some of these folks have served in elective office, and others in the past, and certainly in our schools, you know, our libraries. And so, on behalf of this board, and certainly a very grateful community, we want to extend our sincere appreciation and congratulations to the Elk Grove Book Club. Now their 82nd anniversary, headed into their 83rd year, and they're off our commendation for their good and important work in promoting literacy in our community, and certainly the fellowship and the sharing that they've had amongst one another, but also in the broader community. And as you go forward in the years to come, we want to wish you every success, certainly as a club, but certainly in your individual and collective leadership in our community. So, with that, I'm going to present this, and then allow your members to introduce themselves, and certainly you're the president of the organization this year, to say a few words, and maybe you'd share a very short, Cliff Notes summary of a book, so. Anyway, all right, so with that, I'll mic you up to help present. Go forward, and we'll do a presentation.
My name is Elaine Wright, and I've been with the book club 10 years or longer. It's a wonderful organization. 20 women all get together, and they all have a great time reading the books. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Elaine.
I'm Vicki Gogler, and I was able to join the book club when I retired, so I've been in it about four years. Thank you.
My name is Larkin Morris Penrose, and I'm the second generation of the book club. My mother was a member for many years, and my aunt.
Maureen Gormley. I'm currently fortunate enough to be president of the Elk Grove Book Club.
I'm Marsha Holmes. I'm the immediate past president and the current secretary treasurer, so I don't quite know how that happened, but.
You missed a meeting.
Exactly. But I've enjoyed this group so much. Thank you.
I'm Lynn Osolinski, and I'm the historian, and it was really fun this year to put together our collection and have the Sacramento Public Library accept it into the Sacramento Room. That's all of our minutes, it proves all the continuous part of our club, and we are also still thinking we might be the oldest club in the area.
Claim it and see if anyone argues.
Hi, I'm Mary Adams Wiley, and I've been a member for about three years, and I just love this club and the people who are in it. One thing that we do that's different than most book clubs is that we don't all read the same book. One person reads a book and reports on it for about 45 minutes, and then there can be some discussion of it, and that's one of the aspects of it that I really enjoy.
Thank you. On behalf of previous and current Elk Grove Book Club members, I thank the board, and especially Supervisor Natoli, for this resolution congratulating our book club on its 82nd year. We're proud that many of our club's traditions continue as written in our 1937 bylaws. By the second and third meeting, they had all the bylaws down in 1937. Two of them demonstrate the uniqueness of Elk Grove Book Club. One Mary just mentioned, it was procuring 20 copies of any single book at that time was nearly impossible. There were not the funds, the libraries were not set up with multiple copies, and even though books now are easily accessible, every member still does not read the same book, which would be typical in a book club, but a single member reads and reports. The second unique tradition is that minutes have been taken at every meeting since that very first one, when a group of 10 women got together in 1937. Those minutes reflect the enormous effects events have had on our book selections and members' lives, from the Depression and World War II through today's rapidly changing times. We're also pleased to be here in March, because this month is not only a month of celebration for our Elk Grove Book Club, but also for Read Across America, the reading motivation program for children, and Women's History Month, which highlights women's contributions to events in history. So again, from all of us, and not all 20, as you see, are here today, but we all thank you so much for recognizing us with this resolution.
Thank you.
I want to know who has, when you're president, do you have to have all the boxes of minutes in your garage?
That's why we put them over in the Sacramento.
It's not a criteria for being president.
No, no.
So what's your book of the month this month?
Well, there's no book of the month.
Oh, no book?
You see, it's a single person, and do you remember the title? Because only one person reads the book, just as was done back then. So tomorrow is our meeting.
It's about the effects of plastic on them.
Oh, yes.
Effects of plastic.
Plastic on the environment.
Okay, very, very relevant topic, so.
Well, to bring in a piece of plastic, the old plastic.
Very good. Well, thank you all for coming down this morning. We'll get a picture with all of you, and again, we'll applaud you, recognize you for all of you. So if you want to turn and.
Yes, turn this way. We're here. Come up here, Marsha. Yes, I need someone to help hold.
It's very, I know it's very heavy.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, really appreciate it. Thank you.
For item 29, I need a motion to drop this. It's the presentation of resolution recognizing April 1st through the 7th as National Public Health Week. You adopted a resolution on the consent calendar, but there will not be a presentation.
So move.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 30 is the FAM Property Community Plan Amendment and Rezone Project. A community plan amendment and rezone from Business Professional to Limited Commercial on a property located on the southwest side of the Walaga Road and Antelope Road intersection in the North Highlands Foothill Farms community. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy. Board members, Chris Pahouli with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review, and I'll be providing the staff presentation for this item. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Wait for a second for it to come up. So the request before the board is a community plan amendment and rezone for a vacant 4.42 acre site from BP Business Professional to LC Limited Commercial. The subject site is located at the southwest corner of Antelope Road and Walaga Road in the North Highlands Foothill Farms community. This map shows the current zoning of the subject site and surrounding area, which includes retail to the north, multi- and single-family to the west and east of the subject site. In 1990, the board denied a rezone parcel map and gas station use permit on the subject site, at the time citing concerns with the number of gas stations in the nearby proximity, and a desire for the property to be built out as office-retail. Since that time, the subject site has remained vacant for almost 30 years, and has been a concern of neighboring residents wishing to see it developed and not become an issue for illegal dumping and transient activity. The applicant originally submitted the request with a four-lot parcel map, however, planning and design review staff expressed a desire to consider the lot division when specific uses were identified, to ensure a consistent site layout and design program on the subject site. Therefore, there is no lot division or development planned as part of this request. Also to note, a negative declaration was prepared and released in July 2018, and no comments were received on the environmental document. Both the North Highlands Foothill Farms CPAC and Planning Commission met and are recommending the board approve the request. Staff is also recommending approval based on the request being consistent with community goals, the desire to make the property more attractive for investment, and no community opposition to the request. To review the request, staff is recommending the board determine the environmental analysis adequate and complete, and adopt the negative declaration, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, adopt the community plan amendment resolution, and approve the rezone subject to conditions of approval listed in the ordinance. This concludes my presentation. The applicant team is here, and I'm happy to answer questions that you may have.
Ms. Peters.
I wanted to say I was very pleased to have this application come forward and work with planning to adjust it to make it the best possible use of that property. It's, I've received complaints on this property for a number of years about homeless encampments and trash and other unsavory activities. So, I was very glad to have the fam, family bring it forward and work with us, and so I would move approval of all four of the recommended actions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thanks very much.
Item 31 is the 2030 General Plan Annual Report for Calendar Year 2018.
Good morning.
Morning.
Raise the. Raise the podium.
Yeah, that's not going to work.
All right, hopefully that's a little better. Good morning, Chair Kennedy, Board of Supervisors, Todd Smith with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. Today I'm presenting our 2030 General Plan Annual Report for last year, calendar year 2018. This is something we do every year, and it is a report on the status of implementation of the general plan. We do this to the Planning Commission, to your board, then we submit this report to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, as well as the California Department of Housing and Community Development. This is due, this time of year, every year, we have to submit by April first. I am not going to read all these pieces of legislation and give you an overview, I just want you to know, the housing legislation is continuing. We've done a lot of work with the CEO analysts and the legislative lobbyists on behalf of the county, to understand how these pieces of legislation affect the general plan implementation, the zoning code, all the practices we participate in. So the annual report contents, we have completed a number of major projects and are implementing ongoing programs. I'm going to discuss briefly the two-pronged approach to the county's growth strategies that's in the general plan, give you a summary of the applications received and general plan amendments, and talk a little bit about the 2019-20 work program and what we see as our priorities for implementation. Your staff report also includes a progress report on the housing element, as well as something new this year, which is an implementation measure status report, that's appendix B, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. So the major programs and projects this year, we adopted the first phase of the environmental justice element, and began significant work and extensive public outreach on Phase Two. We continued on the countywide climate action plan, we did a lot of outreach with a wide range of stakeholders, and prepared some revised targets and draft greenhouse gas reduction measures. The housing element implementation, that is ongoing, we're in our sixth year of the eight-year planning period, tracking the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and everyone knows this, but the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan was adopted by the permities and the South Sacramento Conservation Agency. With respect to the housing element and its implementation, I've highlighted five programs here. Real briefly, Program B1, Meeting with Housing Developers, that includes affordable housing developers as well as market rate developers. We did that in the fall, got some really good feedback from the various groups on some processes we can improve, and as well as got some ideas for incentives to promote more affordable housing and market rate development. Program D6, which involves outreach with persons with development disabilities, this includes the Disability Advisory Commission. We did meet with them this year, and as a result of that, did some updates to our personal, the Planning and Environmental Review website, on the page specifically around housing and the various programs that we have as a county. The county is also conducting a countywide ADA self-evaluation and transition plan for the county-owned or leased facilities, as well as public rights-of-way. Program D8, Design Guidelines for Senior Facilities, this was kicked off in the summer last year with a zoning code amendment that was initiated, dealing with supportive living uses. Program C5, the conversion of older motels to affordable housing, this involves not just our office, but coordination with the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, an example of this would be the Courtyard Inn, that's in progress. And finally, D18, the Ten-Year Plan to End Homelessness. I don't need to tell you the importance of this, but the county did adopt a homeless plan last year, there are six initiatives in that, and we view that as a building block for partners in the county, outside the county as well, or at least the county family, if you will, as well as a framework to potentially go for some more state resources that might be available to deal with homelessness. Now everybody's favorite topic, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. So the next three slides are more or less the same information, just displayed differently. This one shows our progress from 2013 to 2018 in the various income categories. You'll see the very low and low-income categories, we are well short of meeting our obligation. I do want to note that the county is not alone in this, there are twenty-four jurisdictions statewide of five hundred and thirty-nine that have met their obligations, so obviously the overwhelming majority of jurisdictions statewide have not met their obligations for RENA.
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So Todd, I just want to get some clarification, given the governor's recent comments about linking access to gas tax funding relative to jurisdictions, RENA allocations. My understanding is that this continues to be a target for identifying sites and planning, it is not a construction target, in other words jurisdictions are not deemed to be out of compliance with state goals if they don't produce units, it has to do with planning for and identifying sites for housing at these various income categories, correct?
That is correct, and I can expand on that if you'd like. We are tracking that, the trailer bill from Governor Newsom, and we do have some concerns about that, namely, a lot of the feedback we've heard from the affordable housing developers is their big constraint in infill areas can be infrastructure. To set up a program or an approach at the state level where we're essentially cutting off transportation funding, infrastructure funding, for failure to produce affordable housing, really, from our perspective, we're cutting off our nose despite our face.
I was about to use the same term.
Yeah, so we obviously have some concerns with that, for sure.
Okay, great, good, thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry Supervisor Ross.
Do you know the number of that trailer bill, by any chance?
Not off the top of my head, but I'm sure I can have somebody look it up real quick.
I'd be curious, thanks.
Okay, so that's that. The next slide, just another graphic example, depending on your frame of reference, the light blue in these bar graphs represents our RENA obligation, the dark blue is the total units with issued building permits at the various income levels. Again, just another way of looking at it. And this one, the same data, just displayed differently, it breaks out very low and low in the blue bar graph, or the furthest left, I guess, in 2015, 16, and 18. Red is moderate, green above moderate. So with respect to implementation, these are the projects that your board acted on last year that required general plan amendments. The first one I already mentioned, the environmental justice element, the Phase One was adopted in May. The land use designation changes in the table below, Cordova Hills was an amendment to reflect the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, as well as the projects, individual 404 permits, to reconcile the land uses therefore. North Vineyard Plaza was a low-density residential to commercial and office designation change, and Castleman South was ag-res to low-density residential. And this next slide is something new we're reporting on this year. So last year, we mentioned the significant number of policies and implementation measures contained in the general plan. This slide breaks them down by element, so from the ag element all the way to the safety element. The dark blue, or excuse me, dark green bars are the policies, and the lighter green are the implementation measures. You can see, we've got a lot of work to do here. And we started with the land use element. So we've done a lot, forty-one implementation measures completed, some progress in the yellow, twenty-eight, and then no progress. That doesn't mean we are leaving those by the wayside, we are, there's a lot of challenges in the general plan that we're working to implement. We do, we did identify in the land use element roughly twenty-five percent of the implementation measures pointing to a robust infill program that I'm going to speak about a little bit So when it comes to growth, SECOG has a projection from 2016, we're looking at forty-eight thousand units by 2036, obviously that's based on the State Department of Finance projections, and we're dealing with that with two strategies. One is the infill, where we've identified in the general plan, some vacant or underutilized properties, roughly ten to eighteen thousand units there, as well as revitalization of existing commercial corridors that could be aging, roughly nineteen thousand units. I want to pause here and make note of something that's not in the slide, but...
Okay, while you're pausing, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. In the section here on vacant and underutilized properties and revitalizing commercial properties, is there a plan to come back with how the county can maybe support financially people who wish to add ADUs or build apartments on commercial corridors, or anything along that line?
Excellent question, that was the reason I paused.
Oh, okay.
You guys worked this out, didn't you?
So there's a couple of things that we're working on, and they weren't ready for prime time, but to let you know, yes, we are working on essentially a housing incentive package or proposal internally that we would bring before the board, that deals with not just those items you mentioned, but ADUs, I guess you did mention that, ADUs, the higher density on commercial corridors, all those things are in that package, or will be in that package.
When we be bringing that back to the board?
I don't have a firm answer on that just yet, we are discussing it later this afternoon, internally.
This year?
Oh, yes, sorry, this year, for sure. The second thing I wanted to mention in my pause was the financial component of that. We have submitted a pre-application to SECOG for their Green Means Go pilot program, it's something that SECOG is proposing as a carve-out of the state budget. Obviously, we have to wait until that process is finished before we know whether that funding will be available to the county, but we have identified five potential target areas for green infill through that pre-application process to SECOG. That funding, if it's approved, could be used to either backfill, for example, fee waivers or fee reductions, it could be used as a land banking mechanism where the county could potentially acquire properties to assemble a complete site, could be used to fund infrastructure to get over that potential constraint of aging infrastructure, as a few examples, that's not to say that's all.
So our application talks about all of those ways we might use the money?
It does.
Okay, and I mean, even if we are not successful in getting that money, we need to be looking at ways to encourage it. The fees on ADUs, I think are pretty, I mean, it's a five-hundred-dollar application fee, but don't let that fool you, it gets up to be between ten and twenty thousand dollars a unit, and that's quite a lot for someone who's adding a guest house in their backyard, an ADU.
Understood, absolutely.
Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So lots of, to the projections that feed this exercise, what do you know, Todd, about how either DOF or SECOG or both are adjusting to kind of this odd era we find ourselves in, where you can't really look back at historical growth projections and simply extrapolate? I mean, ever since we came out of the Great Recession especially, it hasn't been business as usual in terms of the number of units that are produced across the region, across the state, in our county. If you take forty-eight thousand-plus units over the next seventeen years, I mean, that's a pretty significant growth rate, and it's hard to kind of reconcile that, given what we know to be kind of this new condition we find ourselves in over the last eight years or so. So how, who, or how, is there some ground truthing on projections?
That's a good question, I don't have a very specific answer for you, but we are engaging with SECOG on their current MTP-SES update to try to provide a local jurisdictions on the Sacramento counties' experience on implementation to, it's really truth test from what we see at the local level, we track building permit on a yearly basis to say, this may not be a realistic expectation or assumption that we, as a region, are going to achieve this number of units. I don't know the intricate details of how they come up with the projections, though.
If you could convey to SECOG that you're at least hearing from one member of the board about this concern, there may be others that share it, but just, my thumbnail sketch of things is that households aren't growing as fast as they once did, but household size is.
Correct.
And so all those things that are in flux are always, you know, affecting how we grow, how we plan for growth, need to somehow be accounted for, otherwise, we're simply planning for the future the same as we have in the past, and as far as I'm concerned, it's a new day, it's a different day for how we plan new communities, how we meet the challenges of infill, how we deal with a very different millennial mindset in terms of a willingness to encumber themselves with the debt of homeownership. So these are all things that are game changers when it comes to planning and growth in California. So if you can get that, send that message back to James and his staff that there is that concern by some, I think that would be helpful.
I've made a note of that, thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, Todd, I don't know if this is all for you, but I, just in, and I appreciate certainly the detail that was encompassed in the, you know, all the attachments in the report, but as I'm looking through some of these pages, and what occurs to me is that, and I know you mentioned it briefly, and it's something we often hear, well, you know, fees are too high and such, from those who may be, you know, potentially considering building, and I think that can certainly be a barrier, but when I look at participation, at least in the fee waiver and fee deferral programs, it's pretty meager. I mean, it may be reflective, obviously, of the overall market interest that folks bring to it, but there were a couple of years when we had no one even apply, or there was no, I mean, they applied, but at least, you know, as I look at page twenty-six and twenty-seven of the attachment, and so I guess that makes me ponder at least a bit, that recognizing that, just on its face, the fees can be, you know, obstacles, or maybe that just keeps people from even going any further, because I'm kind of curious, though, is that, you know, for what at least we currently offer, there's very few takers, and/or is the criteria such that it makes it, that, you know, that difficult, and when I think about sewer credits that, you know, we've had available to us for many years, and those are going to expire here in a year or two, and we're looking at utilizing them before they go stale, or we have to redeem them, but there are other, in all the various utilities and so forth, we've given some consideration to that, certainly from permitting, and then I guess just the other part of the question goes to recognizing that, I like to have an answer on that, but also that on page twenty-four, we put this infill technical assistance program together, and apparently, either we, the board, didn't finance it, it says, lack of financial resources and staffing, Sacramento County Infill Technical Assistance Program was temporarily discontinued. The county is currently working on creating a new infill program, and so, it says to me, if I read that correctly, at least the currency of this document, that was on bottom page twenty-four in that chart, is that we don't even have a technical assistance program. Now, they could come to you as a planner, or Chris, or others in the planning department, but that technical assistance isn't just from planning, or SHRA, there are a whole host of folks. And so I guess, what I, when I think about this, is that, you know, the commitment that we have from a policy framework here, as relates to the discussion, obviously the obligation that goes with it, and you've... to discussion, obviously, the obligation that goes with it, and you've, you know, given a good report here thus far this morning, a good report in the sense that you've outlined where we are. So I guess I'm kind of, I owe my, one is, is that if we are supposed to have a technical assistance program that's staffed, that helps folks to, some of the questions have been asked earlier on ADUs, but just generally, that commitment needs to be maintained. And if there's financial shortfall, then I don't think it necessarily goes back to the planning department. Then I think that there's an obligation by administration in this county to bring to this board, saying, hey, we know we need to have that from budgetary framework or from a staffing, because we need to go out there and be more robust in, you know, helping to, you know, at least announce to folks that, you know, we have opportunities here, deferrals, waivers, a whole host of things that went into the zoning code and so forth with the development code that have comported with state law, but also hopefully make the, you know, the playing field a level one and maybe give us an opportunity to encourage folks. And so I guess, Todd, you know, a long way of asking the question, so I'm kind of curious what your take, you know, obviously, one who's, you know, steeped in this, why there's so few takers. And secondly, you know, again, if you're free to do so, you know, what you see as from a technical assistance of, you know, a robust technical assistance support program, so.
So to the first question, why don't we have as many takers? That was something that, when staff did the outreach with the Affordable Land Market Rate developers in the fall, their awareness of that program was very limited. It was essentially, we need to do a better job of communicating that to all of our customers and helping them explain the process, helping them understand what's available to them was a big takeaway for us. Not just us in planning, but all the other departments.
Because it's not just planning, you're right, Todd, yeah.
Correct. To the second point of the technical assistance, I think you are correct. It's not just the planning aspect, but all the other technical disciplines, whether they're infrastructure or, you know, the special districts group, for example. One of the challenges that we're seeing is we are not a city. And what I mean by that is we have 20-something individual water districts that we have to deal with, depending on where we're at in the county. And it's not as simple as coming up with a unified approach that works for every part of the county in the urban area because of the differences in the different districts, which is not to say...
And a fire department that we don't control, by the way.
That, too, yeah. So that doesn't mean we can't have a good framework to try to deal with some of these issues, but that's the challenge that we see.
I guess, and maybe Nav, just for you, on this, you know, again, there's certainly a significant role for planning and for SHRA, but for the other technical disciplines and in coordination with these other districts who, again, can make calls on infrastructure that we don't have any, although we do adopt a uniform building code, we adopt a uniform fire code, and so if those are conversations, as we look at those things with fire departments, maybe we have some conversations about that. Those are building standards, but nonetheless, that's an opportunity to interface with some of the providers of utility services. I guess I may be asking you, Nav, so we are, you know, way short, again, and we're not building the housing, you know, we're participating and we're encouraging and hopefully incentivizing. Is this something that, and maybe it's for you to take a look at, should reside with, you know, with the county execs office as a priority? Because, again, you know, I don't put it all off on planning or SHRA or Public Works, but it needs that overall umbrella. And I think from the standpoint of having staffing support, the financial piece of it, that's, you know, an area we're falling short, but also getting the trumpet out there and to the workshop we had, and making sure it's consistent that, you know, not just talking with, you know, organizational folks who may be aware, but making sure that folks know that, you know, we're, you know, available to, you know, be partners in the creation and development of housing, and, you know, and we do bring some tools. They may be limited in some respects. And I guess I would just ask you, what's your sense about that? Because to me, you know, when we come up two years from now, having to redo our plan, you know, that's not going to be, not going to be probably a very easy conversation. And then we get into these things about driving into communities where we have to wholesale rezoning of land, and we've got to do this and this and this, and the standards become lesser, and I don't think that works well from the standpoint of the neighborhood and community interface either. So maybe we can be a little more proactive, I guess, is my...
Yeah, I'm taking the feedback. I think I do want to sit down with planning and all the other technical disciplines and see what resources we can put behind this effort. You're absolutely right. Two years from now, that could be a very painful exercise.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So we still get a little bit of breathing room here. So, and again, it doesn't discount any of the work that's being done here by any means.
No, it doesn't, no. I think, and we will come back and let you know how we are tackling this issue.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Trump.
All right. Moving on, some more details around infill. These are the projects that we are working on or have completed. The first one, North Wad Avenue Complete Streets. The Phase One of this project is Orange Grove to Wynona. We've got a SECOG funding source, roughly $826,000. That's a joint effort with DOT as well as our office. The second one, Fair Oaks Boulevard Complete Street Master Plan. This was adopted last year, or excuse me, two years ago, the end of '17, but now it's moving into implementation. DOT has taken the lead on this, and I do want to give them a congratulations. This did win an Award of Merit in transportation planning this year, so. The third item here, Re-Envision West Arden Arcade. This is building on work that was done in 2017 by SGA. Our office has submitted a Caltrans grant that we hope to hear from later this spring from Caltrans on whether the grant will be awarded to the county. And that is complementary of Department of Transportation's project on Arden Way itself. Some more highlights of the infill program that Economic Development has taken on, excuse me. We did develop with Economic Development a Commercial Center re-use brochure that highlights some of the opportunities we have in the county. And some of those are also highlighted in the Cosmont Report, which was at your board in December last year. That really talked about development constraints on a site-specific basis. And then finally, like I mentioned earlier, roughly 25% of the implementation measures in the land use element are around infill. So we see a really big need for a strong infill program that, I think Supervisor Nattoli, your points were right on. And I do want to emphasize here, this is really not just our office. It's Economic Development, planning, as well as Department of Transportation. All three must be coordinated, and we're doing that on an ongoing basis. So the other approach to dealing with growth in the county, we have these, I don't know, eight or nine approved growth areas, and this slide represents what their, essentially the total capacity of those are, roughly 47,000 residential units. For the purposes of this presentation, it doesn't include the non-residential, but there are non-residential components. And then the next slide, we did this remaining capacity analysis. So in the Vineyard Community Area, there are three major approved plans: the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, North Vineyard Station Specific Plan, Vineyard Springs Comprehensive Plan. Why so many plan names? I don't know. But the point is, there are remaining capacities in each one of these that are broken out in the table, roughly 14,000 units remaining capacity. We have been doing some work, some early discussions with DOT, as well as some other infrastructure providers in the area, looking to see if there are some constraints that we can deal with to get these going, these three plan areas. Obviously, there's been some development along the way, but the big hurdle there, I think, is the roadway triggers.
Ask a question about that?
Sure.
Shortly after the recession lessened, we had a couple of applications. I don't know if it was on these three residential areas, but certainly in that area, we had developers come in and ask for smaller, you know, to revise their plan so that we would get smaller lots and more high-density, because that was selling better. Do you know how many units we picked up in that? And maybe there were only three or four, but I'm just wondering, did we, what we picked up?
You know, I don't have a definite number. I mean, certainly in the various three vineyard plans, we have a big mix of product type and a big mix of lot types. We have everything from, you know, fairly large half-acre agres lots. We have a fair amount of the smaller lot, RD7, RD8, RD9, you know, kind of that small lot product, as well as some multifamily, although I don't think we're seeing the multifamily build out right now quite as much in the vineyard area. But we certainly have a wide variety of product types there.
How far, what percentage of remaining capacity, I see the last line?
Yeah, it's on there.
So they're not very far along.
There is, yeah, there's a lot of capacity. And I will say, you know, in response to the question that you asked the county exec before, is we have, he has formed a team of a lot of our operating departments where we meet regularly, and we really focus on what are some of the barriers to seeing construction moving forward in this area, and that is a big focus for us right now.
Okay, thank you.
So switching from approved growth areas to pending master plans, at the time this was prepared, the Upper West Side project had not been formally initiated, but we'll move it up in the table. The total here is just over 61,600 units in pending master So I talked earlier about our work program and the priorities that we see. Obviously, infill rises to the top of the list. The community spotlights, we've done, almost completed the first phase of these. We're hoping to wrap all of them up by the summer of this year. The environmental justice element, we're hoping to bring Phase Two to this board very soon. The countywide, or excuse me, community-wide climate action plan, that remains on our list. We're kind of on hold right now due to a lawsuit in San Diego, seeing how that affects how we structure our plan. Housing element implementation, obviously, this is a huge priority for us. We have formed what I'll call the County Housing Team. It's a combination of folks in our office, folks from the Municipal Services Agency, SHRA, the Director of Homeless Initiatives. We are formulating kind of the priorities of the housing element, trying to tackle kind of those tough nuts that we're talking about. And then finally, the HCP, there's a lot of work to do on implementation, not just with the county, but the other plan partners, and that's ongoing.
Supervisor Nattoli?
Yeah, Todd, before you go to the next slide, it's kind of bundled up in this, but we talked about the approved growth areas and proposed, but some of the strategies in, you know, in the overall work plan, implementation plan, also included opportunities to advance, you know, homeownership opportunities for folks. And two of them that kind of jumped out at me is one where with our portfolio, those that are partners in the Community Reinvestment Act, you know, with our lenders, that we bring a financial portfolio, and I see that we placed, you know, $15 million a couple of years ago, but I guess I'm curious about that. That needs to be an ongoing effort, that, you know, lenders that, you know, certainly required under law to do that, but how we, you know, place our dollars and our investment with those lenders. And I think about existing neighborhoods, you know, certainly we all represent those either incorporated or incorporated portions of the county. But that's one way to help advance the opportunities for folks who may be in a rental situation, maybe on the lower end of the spectrum as it relates to trying to qualify. And again, interest rates have been such that that hasn't been nearly the barrier it may have been, but as those rise and the markets fluctuate, I think that's really important. And I saw that there was a comment here by, you know, somebody on behalf, you know, the Department of Finance for the county. But I guess, to me, that needs to be something, and maybe you're looking at this regularly now, but I think, you know, as we place our dollars, certainly for investments that pay returns on, you know, on county investments, that it's really important that those dollars go to work. And we had this conversation a few years ago, and actually probably precedes, you know, some current members of the board, about how we can, you know, utilize dollars that we have that are certainly held in trust for things that fund county programs and services, but how we can, you know, leverage those dollars in our community. And so when I see that we just, you know, placed $15 million overall, and that was a couple of years ago, I mean, I don't see any reflection of current activity and who's tracking that from the standpoint, but that, to me, again, I don't know all the details behind that, and you're much more skilled in the finance, and there are others as well. But I do think it's important, when I see that, you know, we have $15 million in deposits for lending activity in low and moderate income neighborhoods within Sacramento County, doesn't tell me how many loans are made, how homeownership, it's very slight on details here, but beyond that, you know, how we can continue to ramp it up. And I know I had a visit from a Wells Fargo representative here just in recent times, and they're going to have some more opportunities. These aren't measured necessarily in thousands, but they are in dozens or hundreds, and I guess, to me, it's really important. It's important where we can leverage some of the dollars that we have, not put them at risk, make sure we assure a return, but also that some of those dollars get invested, you know, in our local neighborhoods and can promote maybe infill, might even be for new construction. I don't know. I mean, but in moderate or lower, you know, lower-income neighborhoods, I think it's really important, so. And I guess I'd like to see some, maybe some...
Some more detail behind it.
Yeah, more detail behind that. The other thing I wanted to ask about, and it's another piece in here, where I know we had conversation in the past that where properties, we get, you know, for working with partners, and it's specifically called out on page 45 where we have Habitat for Humanity, but there are others. They do great work in this community. But the last time we did anything was that we, in 2014, SHRA was the vehicle, but we conveyed five properties on 43rd Avenue. But I don't see any more recent activity working with either Habitat or others where we have either properties available, i.e., you know, certainly Shaw properties, but there may be other county remnant sites. Also, when I think about the sanitation district, they have, you know, sites that, you know, as they've gone through their asset inventory and so forth. And so it seems to me that if we're looking at particularly in established neighborhoods, opportunities to either do some transactions and/or be a facilitator. Some of these processes, I think, came through, you know, lean sales, but I guess I'd like to see us do, be a little more robust. And again, it's not going to be measured in great numbers, but I do think there's some opportunity to work with some of these neighborhoods to do that. So I just call those out. There's, you know, multiple strategies here, and you think all these things working together, we'd have a better result, but in the bottom-line number. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Wrapping up here, the conclusion, we have completed several significant projects to implement the general plan. I mentioned that our RENA progress is falling short, but our permits for moderate and above-moderate housing have increased. The amount of potential for infill and approved plans with respect to presenting or coming up with a lot of units is really high. And we are talking about expanding that vineyard analysis to other of the approved growth areas on a plan-by-plan basis so we can track better what's going on. Yes?
Thank you. I wanted to mention on the annual housing element progress on RENA, there was a page in the report that said that we've provided funding for housing projects in other jurisdictions, City of Sacramento and City of Rancho Cordova. And so we are spending money and time on those projects, but we don't get credit for the housing that is produced, which is problematic to me. And I think we need to take that into account when these kind of projects come up and maybe work out something with other jurisdictions that we split the credit, the housing credits, based on some kind of formula, whether it's money or time, whatever it might be. But I don't think it's appropriate that the county is spending money in other jurisdictions and, you know, to provide affordable housing, which benefits the whole region, which you get. But I hope that we will negotiate something with these other jurisdictions so that more than a fair burden does not fall on the county.
We are in conversation. We're going to start up with the state again, see when we are making that kind of investment, can the county get some credit? So we will keep the board apprised on...
Well, when this report goes in, I don't know whether you will have completed those negotiations at that time, but I think there should be a footnote that X was provided to X other jurisdictions and... to X other jurisdictions and-
We could do that, yes.
For, in case you have to discuss it with him.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I would just echo Supervisor Peter's comments, in fact, we had this conversation yesterday when I briefed with Nav and Leanne, that, you know, one of the projects, obviously, is the Veterans Village at Mather, and that project, obviously, you know, will bring online 100 permanently supported units and transitional housing, and county actually has other available land that could potentially be, you know, complementary to that overall effort out there, but it lies within the, in the city of Rancho Cordova, and so, I, again, stressed pretty strongly yesterday that we need to, you know, pursue this with the state, and, you know, when we have those conversations, because again, housing is, is, is housing, but that if it's appropriately credited, then I think, you know, may advance the opportunities, and certainly Leanne and Nav both were, you know, very receptive to that, but if it needs for some of us to participate, at this point, I want to make it to help advance those discussions, then I think that that's important too, because maybe that's not the way it's done in some of these, you know, strict black and white of how they literally, you know, designate who gets credit for it in the numbers, but I think to the point, if we're, you know, we're working in partnership with other entities and vice versa, hopefully, that there's some opportunity to properly credit so that it goes against arena numbers, but also that we can deliver on the housing where we may have land available, may have certain utilities available, maybe there's better access, but that if, you know, if we're putting, you know, precious dollars in there, that there be proper credit, and that I would think that the local entities could, could arrive at a formula that would, you know, be acceptable, I think it's more, what I gathered, maybe the state-
The state.
-accepting of that, and so I, I'm very supportive though of what Susan said, and hopefully, you know, we can help advance that conversation and maybe, you know, trailblaze that for the rest of the state if that's, you know, if it's so, you know-
When we need your, when we need your assistance, we'll come knocking on your door.
Okay.
I just want to say about that, though, that should a request like that come forward, I think we need to take into account what our numbers are and where that money is best spent, which, to me, number one, you want to be sure you get the numbers, the RENA numbers in-
Right.
...the county's jurisdiction, the unincorporated jurisdiction part of the county-
Understood.
Because that's, that's what will be penalized by the state if we fall short in our numbers.
Correct.
Thank you.
I think that was everything on this slide. So, our recommendation, this is a receive and file, the 2018 annual report, direct staff to submit this report to the governor's office of planning and research and to HCD, and then finally, direct staff to proceed with implementation of the general plan, including the projects that we've outlined in our work program, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Todd. Mr. Gill, separate but related, aren't we scheduled, am I imagining this, and if I am imagining it, then we need to, scheduling a discussion before the board is workshop on, specifically on our housing situation, and specifically on affordable housing and the RENA issue, don't we have a workshop coming?
We had discussed it, but we haven't put a date yet.
Then maybe you and I can talk about that more.
Yes, let's discuss that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there a motion?
I'd move a staff recommendation.
To receive and file?
No, it's actually to direct staff as well-
Oh.
-which is more of an action. There's three items. The chair will second, please vote.
Ms. Peters?
I'll be with you in a minute.
Okay.
Trust me, Susan.
I'm going to recuse because of the Habitat Conservation Plan, a portion of it.
Got you.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Thank you, next time.
Item 32 is hearing to determine whether to modify definition of Sacramento area for the purposes of applying the prevailing rate provisions of County Charter Section 63.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Chair Kennedy, Board members, David Devine, Director of Personnel Services. Every two years, the County Charter requires that we take a look at the Sacramento region for determining the prevailing wage rate. We look at such things as where county employees live, where our candidate pool or applicants on our eligibility list live, and also looking at newspaper circulation. All those indicators point out that there should be no change into the definition of the Sacramento area. Also, we have noticed the recognized employee organizations and also advertisers in the Sacramento Bee, and as of today, we've had no comments from public or the employee unions. Also, in, as we move in the future, and hopefully two years from now, what I'm looking at, looking at the boundaries of the Sacramento area, it's pretty broadly defined, I would like to work with county council in terms of changing the ordinance so that we would only have to come to you if there is a change. There hasn't been a change since 1979, and that's going on 40 years, so, looking at the boundaries, it looks like where the growth patterns are following within the region, it doesn't look like there would be any change within the foreseeable future, so, in terms of being efficient. So, I ask that you open the hearing and approve the attached resolution, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, before opening the hearing, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So, speaking of boundaries, I'm looking at the Exhibit A, the Sacramento area map, I can say I've never seen what appear to be kind of weird arbitrary boundaries like this before, I've seen the, the Six County Regional Map, this, this is a kind of a bizarre map, is this, is this one that is in statute?
This map was established in 1979, I think was looking at the growth patterns where people lived, usually people lived in Yellow County, the I-80 corridor up through Roseville, Rockland, and then up the 50 corridor through Eldorado Hills and the Plaza, then also into Lowdy. So, that captures, what that data captures where the majority of our employees probably lived at that time, and there hasn't been any change really since.
So, so do we still think since 1949, that's the same geographic case?
Yeah, 1979, we look at the data-
You say 79 or 49?
79, I'm sorry, it's been 40 years.
Okay. All right, I just, it just, it's very strange, and I just wondered why it is the way it is, and whether or not it needs to be perhaps reconsidered, given the fact that we've done a considerable amount of growing in 40 years, and employment, or our employees' residence, you know, place of residence has probably changed in the, those 40 years.
I think the map is kind of awryly shaped because of the growth patterns, also we take into the zip codes where people live, and zip codes, really, the borders of those don't really have a defined or a nice, like a-
Well, if I read this, if I read the map correctly, we're, we're saying that there's no employees that come from Sutter County, for instance?
In terms of the volume, I think we tend to look at the percentage, there's 93% of our employees live within that, within the boundaries, they could fall out at that boundary, and that's why it's not included in the map, but we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, could we bring, bring the map up on the screen?
I don't have a-
We don't, I don't have a paper copy, I-
Okay.
I have a paper copy, because I get-
Yeah, there's five paper copies of them here.
Five of them. I'm paperless, sorry.
Thanks for doing that, because what I find extremely odd is that, we talk about Sacramento County, we actually cut out a portion of our county in the Delta, that you take the lower portion of the Delta, but you actually cut out the Walnut Grove to, why would we do that? If you're talking about our county region, irrespective if you had any employees live there or not, county is the county.
Right.
And I find that really odd, and it's been that way for 40 years, and certainly to, I mean, but if I read that correctly, David-
That, that is correct, I mean, that's how lines got drawn in 79, and we can-
Yeah, I, I would just suggest for purposes, whatever you do-
Include the whole county?
Yeah, 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 well, we've got the lower portion of the county, why wouldn't you have the middle portion of the Delta there, I just don't, you know, maybe there's some census tract where, you know, a bit, it doesn't make any sense to me, and again, I think some of the other suggestions, one, I think it's a good idea to take a look at it, but at a minimum-
But that's been an oddity that-
Yeah, it's, okay, but at a minimum, that you have, you know, the entire, because again, we have to use prevailing wage rates when you use federal dollars and those, and it spills over to the, to the Bay Area, I get all that, but the fact that you wouldn't include your entire county in your own prevailing wage considerations, that's not-
My understanding is that when this was done in 79, it was all data-driven, as Dave said, it's the 93% where folks lived, and that's where the county employees lived at that point, but we can put the whole county in.
Right.
We could do that, right? We could change that, right?
Right, we'll just make it a part of the recommendation in terms of including Sacramento County, and we'll adjust the map.
Can I just dovetail off of that a little bit, what's involved with, with reassessing or reexamining the data, is it a survey that you give out to your employees, or do you-
No, we, in our system, we have all the employees live by their zip code, and also when people apply for the county, we look at where they're coming from by zip code and on the eligibility lists.
Okay.
See, our experience has been is that what you see on the map there is predominantly where either employees live or they're applying from it, and the question you had in Sutter County, I think as Sutter starts to grow in the future, that could be a change we'll have, but right now, we're not seeing that much activity coming out of Sutter.
But my point is that it has grown over the last 40 years, and so have other parts of adjacent counties, and so I can almost guarantee you, the map is going to be very different, even if you apply the same, you know, survey filters or what have you to plug in the, the current data, it's going to be a very different map.
No, we, we look at that, but our experience from what I think what we're trying to say is, what you see there is predominantly where folks are coming from-
Right.
And applying from.
And they apply from this area, in the future, you're right, with Sutter getting the development that it's slated to get, it will be an adjustment made at that point.
And in those numbers, the percentages haven't swayed very much over the last, since I've been here, the last 15 years, in order for us to change the map, but I mean, we'll take a look at it as the growth patterns occur.
Okay.
Well, we'll definitely get the whole county in, that's an oddity.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, I have no cards, so is there a motion?
I move the staff report, do we need to give any further direction about going back and relooking at, I mean, this is just adopts it for this present time, but you need, it doesn't say it can give you a direction to redo the-
Yeah, we'll take that in consideration, and we'll look at it for the next go-around.
Yeah, but I think that in motion.
I, I think based upon the questions and the issues, I wouldn't rush the automatic renewal at this point.
Okay.
Probably two years from now, we'll want to look at this.
We'll revisit it and do, if any calls for it, then we'll take a look at it then.
Chair will second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're on to nominations, item 33. You are continuing to May 14th, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Casumnes Area Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Casumnes, County Service Area 4C, Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. For your first item, Antelope County, excuse me, Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Please reappoint Jody Wilhelm and continue the remainder to April 9.
Okay. Children's Coalition, Mr. Kennedy.
Chief recommend nominating Robin Blanks-Guster and waive the process.
Second.
Vote.
Unanimous vote.
And we will continue the remainder to April 9.
Disability Advisory Commission.
Chief recommend nominating Patricia Gaynor and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And we will continue the remainder to April 23rd.
Elk Grove, Casumnes Cemetery District, Mr. Natoli.
Yes, I have an interview pending, so we continue it to April 9, please.
Okay. Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Mr. Kennedy.
Chief recommend nominating Daniel Jackson and continuing the remainder to May 14th.
Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Natoli, Mr. Serna.
Please continue to April 9.
Okay. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Please appoint Lorraine Silvera.
Chief recommend nominating Alice Kimble to the user representative vacancy and waive the process.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Sacramento County Mental Health Board, Supervisor Frost.
Please continue to April 9.
Okay. Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Mr. Kennedy.
Please continue to May 14th.
South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to April 23rd.
And that concludes your nominations.
Yes, sir, Mr. Natoli.
Yeah, just, this is a general question, I've had some inquiries, and I understand there's been some work done around it, but on the Veterans Commission, that, you know, the level of support, I've, the commissioner from District Five had inquired about routing of inquiries, about a website, about whether or not business cards, and I do believe business cards should be made available, we have five commissioners, and if they're out at public meetings and events, but I just, you know, what level of support, you know, you're shaking your head now, so maybe, but that needs to get addressed.
Yeah, I think I can address some of that, so some of those concerns were given to me last week, I've spoken to Mr. Wagstaff, our Deputy County Exec for Social Services, to work with our Veteran Services Officer, because the comments I've received is what's the charter, what are they supposed to do, the frequency of meetings, who's supporting that, so I'm having Bruce work with the Veteran Services Officer and with that committee to come up with preamble, the charter, and then also, I think, business cards, whatever's needed.
Yeah, so the public input, they're going to be seeking and getting at their meetings and such, that there's a way to communicate with them, because right now, apparently, it's pretty, there's not anything there to communicate, they can't even communicate with commissioners, I guess.
Yeah, so what we're going to do, once we have all that stood up, we'll send a memo to board members saying, this is what we stood up, and the meetings, and whatever other information you need from it.
Okay, very good, thanks.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, we do have two off-agenda items, cards, but one I don't believe is still here, Yolanda Lewis, okay, and Michael Smith. Morning.
My name is Michael Smith, excuse me, I'm out of breath a bit, I just had to feed a meter, my address is 8950 La Riviera Drive in Sacramento County. The issue I wanted to just bring before you folks deals with the PACE funding, the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program. A couple of years ago, my father took out a loan through the PACE mechanism to put on a new energy-efficient roof. When I took over the house, when the house was transferred to me last year, my wife and I secured a mortgage on the house in order to do some, some fairly major remodeling. The bank required, as a condition of the mortgage, that the PACE loan be paid off. And, thank you very much, and that's fine, I understand that, so the bank requested a payout letter from the finance company, which was Wildon, I believe, they sent that letter to the bank, and the appropriate proceeds were taken out from the mortgage loan to pay off the PACE loan. That was in the first week in July, when I got my tax bill for 2018, 2019, I noticed that there was still the $2,000 payment that we owed on, on the bill, so I called the assessor's office, and they said, well, no, that's supposed to be on there, because your loan wasn't paid off before June 30th, so even though you paid the loan fully, because it wasn't paid until after the turn of the fiscal year, that you now owe an additional year's payments on the loan. And that just, I know, I know we only have two minutes, but I don't understand the rationale for that, I don't understand the logic or the fairness of it, so now, I've paid off the loan completely, I still owe over $2,000 on the loan, so I'm not sure if the assessor's office has no mechanism for refunds, or what the rationale is. When I looked at the original loan agreement, PACE loan agreement, there was language in there that talked about that, one of those, you know, very fine print sort of clauses, I didn't even recognize it until my attorney looked at it, and he said, yeah, it's there, so, but I'm not sure what I'm asking, clearly, I'd like my money back, but for, for, for payment on a loan that is, that I don't owe anything else, that no longer owe, and is no longer in effect.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't know if you folks are aware of this sort of, sort of mechanism, or what the rationale is for, or the fairness of it, I just don't understand it.
I think, I'll take the gentleman's information, work with our Treasury Office, see what we can do. can do.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you stick around long enough to give him your name and phone number.
Actually...
Not right now.
I stopped up at your office.
Okay.
On my, this was on my way down. I filled out a form.
Okay, I just checked, and they, I didn't have any information on it, so...
We'll get it. Thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Now, we're on to the CEO's comments.
No comments.
Supervisor comments.
Members, Mr. Natale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. The, I wanted to call attention to a matter I think needs some more thorough review and consideration, maybe of looking at our development standards. And I mentioned this to Mr. Gill yesterday and told him I'd be bringing it up today. There's been a couple of situations of recent where, in areas that are under development, where developments approved, and installation of both public utility streets and such, but also obviously construction of subdivisions, new homes are being, are underway and being built. But what this has done, and again, in an area where obviously, once in the Vineyard Area, that it's not rapid build-out, but it's steady. But where we have situations where stubbed streets have stubbed into people's side yards, to their backyards, you know, well advanced, obviously, of homes being built, but it's left people pretty exposed on their properties. And my point being here is, I talked with our folks, and they've looked into the specific situations, but I did a drive around and looked at other situations. And I think it's one thing if the developer holds the adjacent land, there's another phase of a subdivision. But where we're basically taking public streets, fairly wide ones in some cases, right into field fences that have people's backyard, side yards, their animals, their equipment, and folks obviously, you know, have fencing, but it's field fencing, it's been sufficient. And actually, some of these are interior lots, and so they were in the way back end of their properties. I just, you know, and asking, well, what do we do? Can we put some sort of a physical barrier there that certainly doesn't denote that there wouldn't be a through street at some future date, but also provide a little bit of buffering from, you know, intrusion? Because what we're finding now, obviously, people take the liberty, they see a field, and, you know, even if they're not near the wells, that, you know, crossing the, you know, the people's yards and fields or animals. But also, it's opened them up to thievery and to vandalism, and, you know, there's some specific circumstances that I certainly could cite. But I think more generally, what I, you know, again, recognizing that, you know, those will continue to be developed areas over time, and that, you know, as we look at the interface, you know, obviously those properties are property zone, but where people have existing residences, homes, outbuildings, their own pursuits on their own properties, whether it's gardening, or animals, or whatever it might be, that, in my view, just putting a white barricade up where they sign the notes in the road, and then calling that good for whatever period of time is not sufficient any longer, and if it ever was. But I just, reflecting on that, and knowing that we have developing areas in the county, I look at some of the growth areas and such, it seems to me that the standard ought to be, at a minimum, something that would have, you know, whether it's a cyclone fence, you know, that certainly would provide visibility, obviously, from a standpoint of, but at least provide some physical delineation beyond some of these, you know, five-strand barbed wire, or, you know, three-strand wire with a field fence, and on the adjacent property, and calling that good. It just seems to be an invasion of privacy to some degree, but certainly it opens folks up. And in one case, that, I'll leave it with this, is that we have two streets have come together, and basically, this party now on their side yard, and, you know, they have a residential property, and you have these wide gaps that will be there for, I guess, a long time, as long as their agres properties in place, and those subdivisions are constructed. And so, I think it necessitates a review, and I guess I would like, in a fairly quick manner, for us to get back here and look at what that development standard might be, and, you know, again, have some criteria regarding that. But as new subdivisions are being matted and plotted, mapped and plotted, and obviously constructed, I think it's only fair to folks who are adjacent properties, and that you have to bear the burden of that, where basically, they're opened up on properties that actually were adjacent to fields that, you know, at one time were, you know, where you may have one or two property owners, now you have multiples, but also you've taken a public street right into the edge of their property and just left it there. And so, again, that suffices for an explanation today, but, Mr. Gill, I'd like to see us have something back in a fairly short amount of time, at least with some sort of report, and, you know, what would be a fair approach, obviously, from the standpoint of investment, but also recognizing that at some point in time, streets will probably stand through. But it might be years in some cases, so...
Yep. We'll look into it.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? I have one comment. Mr. Gill, you're quite aware of a situation in District 2 on Stockton Boulevard, very close to District 1, actually, at the San Juan motel site. And, you know, I want to thank Rob Leonard and yourself for your efforts of late, but we have to keep the pressure on SHRA. You know, the last word they came out with was that they intended to hoard the property off. It's, we have a health crisis there, a safety crisis. The people who are living there aren't helping, are not in a safe environment themselves, and the people who legitimately live in the neighborhood and trying to do business there have been severely impacted. We've had threats of violence, we've had fires, we've had, you know, open feces on the property, and SHRA tells me of late that it's going to take two to three months to put a fence up. And again, if my stern sound is not aimed at you, I understand that you've been helpful, Mr. Leonard's been helpful, but this is totally unacceptable. The people in that area should not be expected to live this way, and to be told that property that is owned and operated by the agency can't be fenced off and protected, you know, for two to three months is just astounding. It's an untenable situation that we have to fix quicker than that.
I'd like to echo the chair's comments about this. I happened to spend the point-in-time count at the San Juan site this year, and saw for myself that evening, the deplorable conditions, and the fact that you have a number of people that continue to suffer out there. It's just, it's a bad, bad situation for everyone involved. And so, I'm thankful that Chair Kennedy has mentioned it during his comments today.
We are going to work with SHRA, find a more expeditious way to get this thing resolved.
Thank you. Anything else? We're adjourned.
Wait, I have adjournments.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's when you say yes.
I was opening my mouth.
We're not adjourned.
I have two adjournments. Earlier this month, local Realtor Catherine Pardon passed away, leaving her husband of 42 years, Jim Pardon. Jim retired from many years in Sacramento County's Economic Development Office and represented the county on the Board of the Fulton Avenue Association. And the couple was well-known at community functions in the Arden Arcade area, and they were always together. In addition to raising their children, Mrs. Pardon was a respected Realtor for nearly 30 years, and most of that time associated with Lyon Realty. She was a gracious, caring person who always thought of others first and treated everyone with dignity and respect, and complimented Jim's noted wit and sense of humor when they were together. So, I'd like the Board to adjourn in memory of Catherine Pardon and express our condolences to her husband, Jim, and their family. I would also like to adjourn today in memory of Dave Leatherby Sr. Sacramento County lost a legend earlier this month with the passing of Dave. Anyone in the Sacramento area will tell you, the Leatherby family is synonymous with ice cream and family fun. The Leatherby's family creamery was co-founded by him and his son, Dave Jr. Dave Sr. grew up in Iowa and worked in a small-town cafe that was owned and operated by his parents, and he wanted his creamery here in Sacramento to be a gathering place for the whole community. When they embarked on their business venture in the early 80s, the climate, business climate posed a challenge with interest rates looming at over 20%. I remember those days. And lenders avoiding high-risk projects like a 6,000-square-foot ice cream parlor. So, without any bank financing, the Leatherby's sought help from a family friend, and Grandpa Al Leatherby, who would run the Main Street Cafe back in Iowa, with their backing, the family creamery on Arden Way opened on August 14, 1982, as a real family operation consisting of three generations of Leatherby's. There's no question, the creamery became an integral part of family life for the entire Leatherby family. Dave Sr. and his wife Sally had 10 children, and legend has it that all of them worked in the family business at one time. And many Leatherby family members, nieces, nephews, cousins, grandchildren, and other relatives still work at Leatherby's today. The successful family business now has ice cream parlors in Citrus Heights and Elk Grove, in addition to their flagship location on Arden Way. And he will always be remembered because the banana split on the menu is named Daddy Dave's, after him. Mr. Leatherby threw his business, instilled in everyone the values of family, the virtue of wholesome fun, and the sense of community, and he made Leatherby's family creamery a gathering place for the whole community, and his passing is a loss to us all. I'd like the Board to adjourn today in memory of Dave Leatherby Sr. Thank you.
I will say that in high school, I consumed more Daddy Dave's than I care to admit. So, with that, we will adjourn in the name of Catherine Pardon and Dave Leatherby Sr.